Going to smile for about a minute while Terry gets all the tech stuff going. Everybody looks good. Wonderful.
We are live.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this forum for the Commissioners of Clay County, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Flat Counties. I am Elizabeth Dar, your moderator, and a proud member of this league. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan national organization now over 100 years old. Despite our name, our membership is open to everyone. We are an issues-oriented organization. We neither screen nor endorse candidates. Our forums provide information and education so that voters can make informed choices at the polls. We envision a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. Our mission is to empower voters and to defend democracy. We're here for this approximately 90-minute voter education event to provide an opportunity to voters to listen as the candidates present their positions on questions which have been submitted to the league via the email address forumquestions@lwvkc.org. All of the candidates have been invited to participate in our forum tonight. We welcome and appreciate these candidates being with us. I'm going to welcome them in order that I have on my screen and invite people watching on Zoom at home to alter your pains so that people running for the same office are next to each other. We have seven candidates here with us this evening, and it's going to be a little hard to follow, I think. So, welcome Joanne Lawson and Steve Wolcott, who are running for the East-at-Large position. Jay Johnson and Sheri, is it Dufay or Dufet?
Duffet.
Duffet, oh, I'm betting zero tonight, who are running for the East seat in the second district. Jason Whittington and Ken Jamison, running for the West-at-Large position, and Jerry Nolte, who is running for the Presiding Commissioner position. I want to introduce to you also the other league members who are here with us this evening. Anitra Steele is our forums chair, and she has been putting in untold hours gathering all the candidates together for our various forums this election season. Cheryl Barnes is our timer for this evening, and she's going to give you a wave, and then we won't see her for the rest of the evening because she's doing such a good job of keeping us on time. And then we have Terry Lane, who is doing all of our tech work. So, thanks to everybody for being here this evening. Our forum will be recorded and available on the league's webpage, lwvkc.org, as well as on Facebook. Let me explain the format of tonight's forum. I'll be asking each of the candidates to respond to voters' questions in a random order determined by a grid, which I've shown the candidates earlier. They will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. Candidates, please keep the answer to the question asked and stick to the topic. There will be no rebuttals at this time, but you can go back to an issue during your two-minute closing remarks. So, let's get started. This is the first question. "In 2020, the voters of Clay County supported change in how the county is run, including increasing the commission to seven members, among other things." Now, this is a two-part question. First, did you support this measure at the time? And second, how will these changes affect the county? And I'm going to call on Jerry Nolte first.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being here, and certainly thank you to the league for setting this up. To answer the question, yes, I did support this new constitution that we are under. The changes, I think, are going to be somewhat dramatic, one of which we are seeing this evening, and that is the fact that we have an expanded commission from three to seven as of the beginning of next year. That's going to do a couple of things. That's going to allow us to have a larger talent pool to draw on. I want to say that all the individuals who are participating in this election are outstanding people, and I would be proud to serve with any of them. It also allows us to have some degree of specialization as far as, you know, people getting into different areas where the county needs to have some focus. But mostly, this is going to help us, I think, not repeat some of the unfortunate times that we had in recent years. I think this takes a giant step forward for this county in making us a more professional and more responsive government. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, how would you, did you support this? And how do you think these changes will affect the county?
Yeah, so I did not support the county constitution. You know, I had a lot, I had some concerns about getting rid of elected officials for unelected bureaucrats. Jeanne and Luanne are two former commissioners. They had, they caused problems for our county, obviously, but the unelected bureaucrats were also a lot of the problems that we had. You know, I started the conversation on moving the county to a constitution charter form of government. Jerry Nolte actually appointed me to the advisory committee, but I made it perfectly clear from the very beginning that I could not support getting rid of elected officials for unelected bureaucrats. So, I think, I think the changes are good. The voters spoke. I just, my personal opinion is, I just could not support getting rid of elected officials for unelected bureaucrats. We had a hard time getting rid of Jeanne and Luanne, and an even harder time getting rid of the bureaucrats who were causing problems, and I just, I just couldn't support it.
Thank you. Ken, how would you answer those questions?
Yes, Ken Jamison, candidate running for Western-at-Large against Mr. Whittington. Thank you for everybody for being here. Thank you to the league for putting this on, and thank you to my fellow candidates for showing up. I was honored to support and vote yes on the county constitution. Not only did I support it and vote for it, I had the honor to serve on the Clay County Constitution Committee. The voters were fed up with our dysfunctional government, and they indicated that they want a brand-new form of government. In that scenario, by statute, by law, the circuit judges of that county appointed 14 members to draft a brand-new county constitution. I was honored to be chosen by the circuit judges. I was the youngest member to serve on that committee. I was one of the two people of the 14. Only two people were unanimously selected by the circuit judges. I was one of those two. And it's changed Clay County for the better. It's moving us forward. It's changed our dysfunctional government. Clay County is a first-class county, yet we've been operating like a third-world country for far too long. A lot of the wrongdoing by our previous, recently commissioners would not have occurred if the county constitution was in effect at that time. It's brought transparency, accountability, nonpartisan elections, term limits, campaign finance reform, prevented politicians from hiring their own family members, and it's moving us forward for the better. It serves the best interest of the people. I was honored to write it and support it.
Thank you. Jay, how would you answer that question? Oh, Jay, you're muted. There we go. Oh, we can't hear you. Let's see. Try unmuting again. Say something now. No, we can't hear you. Terry, can you give us some help? Terry is our tech person.
Check the microphone settings on the right-hand side of your laptop screen.
Yeah, go to the, where the microphone is on the, and check to see that you're, you can test your speaker and microphone. Go to audio settings in the, he is unmuted. I don't know.
We could hear him before, couldn't we? I think in the interest of time, I'm going to ask Sheri to answer the question, then we'll see if we can come back and get you with the microphone. Don't worry, we'll get to you.
I have to work on his computer skills here. I did support the constitution, and I too supported, was selected by the circuit court judges to be on the Constitution Commission, and I was very proud to have been selected for that committee. We did an excellent job of researching why we didn't continue to keep some elected offices that basically follow state statutes. And in that constitution, we put in term limits so that if you do have a problem with a commissioner and you can't get them out by voting them out, then they will term out eventually. So, I was very proud to be on that. That, I was wondering what the, I always, I worked for the county. I understood how the county worked. I knew that most of the offices, elected officials, were mandated by state statutes. The county's expanding. We needed more representation for the citizens. So, this gave us some more people on the commission, expanding it to seven commissioners so that the three were constantly pinpointed to one spot. And I think this would be, give us a better idea of what the county wants and our growth in the county.
Thank you. Jay, let's try again. Can we hear you? No. No. Do you have another device perhaps that you could sign in with, a cell phone or something? Terry, any other suggestions?
No, on the far-left-hand part of the screen is your microphone, and within that is a test, the speaker and microphone. I don't know if we can switch to a phone audio. There's also audio settings where you can check and see whether your audio is working. You can test the microphone and test the speaker.
You see where all the, at the little carrot by the microphone, there are all kinds of things to click on.
Let me see if I can call him on the phone.
Okay, that would be good. And we're going to go on, and I'm going to ask Joanne Lawson the same question. Did you support the new constitution?
I'm sorry, I apologize. Initially, I did not, and a lot of it was because of the previous commissioners, the fact that the way they started it out, it made me have some concerns. But once it went on the ballot, even the verbiage on the ballot wasn't really clear. When it passed, the people had spoken, and I said, "Okey-dokey, if the majority won it, then I'll back it 100%." And obviously, I'm excited to do that very thing. I think that having more representation is a very good thing. You have a larger group of people that you can deal with, and in the long run, I think this is going to be a fantastic thing for the county. It's time that we came into the new world, so to speak. So, I'm ready for it. I think it's a good, it's going to be, give us all an opportunity to speak with different commissioners as well as the fact that more people can get involved in more activities within the county and be more visible.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes, I did support it. I'm primarily happy because of the fact of the recognition that this should be nonpartisan. I think that's very significant. My wife and I, over the years, have discussed the fact that...
Steve, you've frozen, and you said you might have some computer issues. So, I'm going to suggest that you turn off your camera so that we can hear your response.
Current elected officials should, in fact, be appointed by us. I think that's important. We need to look for the most qualified people, not merely because they get elected by someone. We've had previous experiences of someone that was elected auditor that lied about being a CPA, lied about his college that he graduated from, and the only thing that was really true about it was that, oh, and he forgot the fact he also was a felon. So, I think this is good. We need to, I think one of the major things that commissioners will do is appointing qualified people to some of these formerly elected offices. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, are we making any progress there?
Can you hear me?
Yes! Hooray! So, the question is...
I apologize.
...away for a while is, did you support the new constitution in 2020? And second, how will the changes of the new constitution affect the county?
Yes, I'll be brief on this. I did support it. I didn't think it was perfect, but I voted for it, and I voted for it because we needed some change. I think we're going to see over the next maybe decade or so that there's going to be an evolution of that constitution. I think some things will be fixed, tweak a little bit of change, but bottom line, we're a large county. 250-plus thousand people, over 400 square miles. It was time to expand a little bit. Three commissioners was just not proper for our size, and so I think that's going to fix our issues. Like I said, it wasn't perfect. I didn't like all of it. I would have voted a little differently, but it's better than what we had, so I voted for it.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, what is the biggest challenge facing Clay County right now? And what special experience or skills do you bring to this challenge? And we'll start with Ken Jamison.
Oh, yes, the biggest challenge is county government needs to earn the trust back from the voters. And I emphasize the word, a lot of alleged recent corruption from our county officials, elected officials and people running the government, and the voters, rightfully so, have lost trust and faith in our local government and county government. I've knocked on 2,500 to 3,000 doors since March. Every time I knock on a door and I tell the person who answers, "I'm running for county commissioner," almost every single time, they hang their head down in shame or roll their eyes. And it's rightfully so because the people in recent history running our government have not served the best interest of the people. They've served the best interest of their own personal friends or themselves, and that's wrong. So, I'm a United States Marine, Afghanistan veteran. The fathers and mothers of America trust me to lead their sons and daughters in Afghanistan, and I would ask for that same trust and support as your county commissioner.
Thank you. Jason, how would you answer that?
Yeah, I would have to say regain the trust of the people also. You know, we've had a lot of corruption. The people don't have trust or faith in our county government. You know, when it came time that we needed citizens to actually stand up and fight back, I was that person, along with Sheri Duffet, who actually stood up for the taxpayers of Clay County. Not everybody, there was a lot of people that would say that they were fed up and no one would take action, so we actually did something about it. And going forward, I think probably one of the other biggest issues we have facing the county is actually getting qualified department directors. We're going to have a lot of retirements coming up. The next commission's going to need to work with our county administrator to make sure that we get qualified and competent people into those positions. I know our IT department, you know, needs to be shored up. We keep losing IT staff because we're not competitive in pay. Our road and bridges are terrible. All you have to do is go out into the county and talk to somebody, talk to the residents of the unincorporated parts and that rely on the roads and bridges. And, you know, we have roads and bridges that have been shut down for a decade at a time that haven't been repaved. And, you know, we just need to make sure that the next commission, make sure that the department heads, we have qualified, competent people there leading each department.
Thank you. Steve, how would you answer that?
Could you repeat the question because I got froze again, sorry.
I know, okay. What is the biggest challenge facing Clay County right now? And what special experience or skills do you bring to this challenge?
Okay. I think one of the major issues we have right now is deciding how the county's going to look in the next 10 to 20 years. We still have a lot of rural areas. We're having constant fights between developments and the farms, the family farms, the smaller lots, the three, five-acre, 10-acre lots. I think we need to review the land planning comprehensive plan, that use plan, and decide, to decide, are we just going to become another Kansas City urban area? Are we going to retain some of those areas that would be more rural? I live in a rural area. I live on some of the roads that they were talking about that have the potholes and so on. But I think we have a lot of needs in this county. My experience on the school board, which expanded to seven when I was on it, I see a lot of benefits to the variety of people that we have potentially serving on this new commission. I will look forward to that. I think my representation in many local governments helps me better understand many of the laws that we, as a county, will need to comply with, particularly the sunshine law, which was clearly violated on a daily basis by some of our former commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Lawson?
Yes, I think that accountability and total transparency, the two key words when we talk about the new commission and one of the biggest problems that has faced the county in the past. I feel that now people are willing, the commission will be more willing to have open sessions. They'll be more available to customers, well, not customers, but to our taxpayer. I was a county executive for 40 years with Southwestern Bell and with another communications company, and I had the ability to handle four states, deal with a lot of different people, and I feel that I bring all of that ability to work well with others into my job here and offer the transparency that I see, as well as, you know, being available always to my taxpayers. I think roads and bridges are a big thing. I think police budget's a big thing, but the first and most important is being transparent.
Thank you. Jerry Nolte?
Thank you. I think the feature that I think will most describe Clay County going forward is change, and that includes a lot of areas. We've talked a little bit about how that change relates to the trust of the citizens that we represent. I think we need to make sure that we demonstrate that we are indeed taking a new direction. The advent of this new constitution gives us the opportunity to start with something of a clean slate, that we have a new day dawning in Clay County. By the way, I just want to make something clear. We made reference to previous commissioners. I do want to make certain that it's known that John Carpenter and Megan Thompson have been serving for a couple of years now, and they have done a great job in moving forward this county in the correct direction. And what we have been working on right now at the commission has been just that very thing, is preparing for the changes that will be coming and to help hopefully integrate those new members who are coming in because it's going to be a very different dynamic. I think I have the unique ability, having served on the commission for two terms, to be able to provide some context. I know all the individuals who are running. We've worked together on various things, and I feel like the opportunity for us to put this county forward and on a great track is right there. We're first-class county. We need to be a truly first-class county going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sheri.
Hi. Yes, I was audit committee that brought a lot of awareness to what was going on with the county back in 2017, but started in 2016, probably prior to that. I think the greatest challenge with this is going to be trust again, that people don't trust our county government. We were in the news almost every day, and I was shocked when I found out some of the issues that were going on behind the scenes that the normal taxpayer would know about. So, and change, change is the next step with that. We have trust, we have change, we have accountability, and we have transparency. I worked at the county for 13 years. I worked at the clerk's office, the public administrator's office, and the assessor's office. I saw a lot of what was going on behind the scenes, and then when I retired, I decided that I would become involved on the other side and try to make a difference on that part. So, I believe that I bring some honesty, I bring some integrity, and I bring experience to this commission, to this new commission. And again, I was appointed to the Constitution Commission to develop this new form of government, and I'd like to see it go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jay, how would you answer that question?
So, I agree with a lot of things that have been said already. I think, you know, the good book tells us that the root of all evil is the love of money. And I think a lot of things boil down to money. A lot of things, most of the things that the commission does revolves around money. Most of the corruption revolves around money. So, when it comes to challenges, I think electing commissioners that understand and have the experience in handling taxpayers' money, you know, whoever is elected will be responsible for managing almost a half a billion dollars over their term, over for your term. The county budget this year is about 140, 141 million. It's usually around 100 million plus. That's a lot of money, and if you don't have experience managing someone else's money, it's real easy to spend other people's money. It's really easy to get corrupt actually using other people's money. I have some of that experience. I've managed well over a billion dollars in taxpayers' money. I have a track record of management at a level that's reduced government waste. I have a track record of making more efficient governments by reducing taxpayer costs while making the government more effective, and that's what I do if I was allowed. Bring that skill set and that experience. You know, and with that experience comes that education that I have specifically on public sector management with a master's degree in public administration. Those things would have helped me do exactly that, and that's what I would do.
Thank you. Next question. Do you plan to promote any changes in existing taxes, and if so, why? And we're going to come back to our EC2 candidates and go, come back to Jay.
Okay. Again?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so I'm a fiscal conservative. I'm all about doing the best, most effective things that we can using the least amount of money. And anytime we have an opportunity to give some of that money back, I'd be more than happy to do that. However, not being on the commission yet, not knowing quite all the details of the ins and outs, I do know that there are some needs. The sheriff's department, for example, interfunded. The, I've talked about it several times, starting salary for a deputy sheriff, $19.75. That's embarrassing. You know, I got kids that work at Worlds of Fun as lifeguards that made almost that much. And here you have guys strapping on bulletproof vests every night and out there in the middle of the night protecting us for 1975. I would propose that we give increases across the board at that. We have an issue in the jails. We can't hire enough jail custody officers. I just saw a flyer the other day, Boone County is hiring custody officers that pays more than our current deputy sheriffs. I said, "That's wrong." So, we have to fix that. We have to fix the prosecutor's office that they're short on prosecutors and investigators. I don't know that the pay is right there either. It's such a, you have a county prosecutor who's making over 140,000, which is great, but then the assistant prosecutor who makes less than half that, about 60-something thousand. That's just bizarre to me, and I'm not sure why that is. So, some of those things need to be fixed, but it's about better efficiencies. Where can we find savings to address those issues? And that's what I would look for. And if we can find reductions along the way, that's what I'd be all about.
Thank you very much. Sheri, do you support changes to existing taxes?
Well, I would say that it would always depend on how the whole formula is submitted to the state auditor's office. There's a formula that is derived from the computation with the state tax levy, and it gives you a level that you put on your taxes for the general fund, but yet for the county to operate. And it gives you a level that you've put on your taxes for the general fund, but yet for the county to operate on, plus sales tax. So it would depend every year what those assessed value, property values are and would apply it to that formula. So I would, now, I don't know, I'm fiscally conservative, otherwise we wouldn't all be running corrupt. This is very important to keep the taxpayers mind that they it is being spent in the best form that it can be spent. And we are all looking at that on a line by line basis starting January one, those of us who are elected. So that would whatever year, different story that you would have to look at to see what the assessed value is and how it applies to the county.
Thank you. Jared, how are you on taxes?
Um, I also am thinking of being fiscally conservative. Uh, I like lower taxes. That's my orientation and uh property taxes are something that has been a an issue for quite a while, not just in Clay County, but uh across uh other communities. Uh, we just a week ago, Wednesday, the the commission lowered the general county property tax. That was required under uh under statute because of our sales tax revenues. However, the commission chose to go below the legal ceiling, reducing that particular tax by something like twenty-five percent. That is the kind of thing we should be looking to do. We should be doing it incrementally and we should be doing it in a focused manner. Uh, one of the concerns that that raises is how do we then run a government in a fiscally responsible way? Priorities, two two top priorities are sheriff's department, which means the deputies and roads. Um, and we need to make sure our facilities are in good shape. Um, one of the things that we would do, I would not revisit that we ended up stopping. In fact, I ended up stopping a lot of it and that was um, an ill-fated twenty million dollar uh annex bill. That was not approved by the voters. That was even consulted by voters and I'm happy to say we walked that back. So yes, we need to be lower taxes, but that requires fiscal responsibility and focusing on the important priorities and what is important to our citizens.
Thank you. Joanne, what's your position on taxes?
Uh, I do believe that we should lower some taxes. Um, the county's growing by leaps and bounds. Uh, I, we see increased property taxes. Uh, we see increase in sales taxes because there's more people buying more product. The people today are looking at going out where you used to buy eggs for ninety-nine cents a dozen. Now they're over five dollars for a dozen of eggs. You know, people need a break somewhere. So I feel that the county can, and you know, here again, just like someone just said, we don't know, all of us who are trying to get into office, we don't know all the ins and outs on the budget. But I sincerely feel that when the county was able, like Jerry stopped uh to have a twenty million dollar building or they'd hire additional law firms for huge amounts of money. Uh, I feel that we can be more religious in the way we control the budget and give the people back a little bit of that money. It's their money in the first place, so they deserve it back.
Thank you. Steve?
Steve, this is the tech host. You may need to unmute. I was getting some feedback from your lines, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. The uh budget is an important thing for the county. Um, I had experience for twelve years approving the budget for the Smithville School District. And some of that was during the hard times when the the uh state was cutting us back on some of our funds and so on. I need to better examine. I've looked at the budget. I've tried to examine the budget. I've got a lot of questions about the budget. I do believe the money that we currently receive, we can probably spend better in many ways. We may be able to consolidate some departments or some of the current duties that are, we are duplicating by different departments in the county. But I'm not in a position, at this point, I keep hearing the other candidates say, we need more money for the sheriff. We need more money for the roads. Well, you don't cut taxes at the same time you do that. And when you look at the county tax bill, a very small part of the current taxes people are paying is going for county services. Most of it, of course, is going to your school district or other things. So uh, before we get in a big hurry to cut all the taxes, I think the county has a lot of needs. I think we need to examine that very carefully. Uh, I may eventually vote for a tax decrease. Uh, but right now I need to have more information about the budget before I'm in a position to make that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, what's your position on taxes?
Yeah, like Steve, you know, we've got to see the budget. We need to evaluate where we can maybe make cuts. You know, why is the county in the airport business? Why is the county in the golf course business? Why are we competing with uh private businesses? And, you know, frankly, the golf course loses money every year. Why are we continuing to lose money? You know, we could re- reallocate that money to other places. So as of right now, um, before I could vote on a budget cut, we have a lot of services that need to be improved. Like Jay said, uh, our sheriff deputies are some of the lowest paid in the entire metro area. We're the largest um largest agency in the metro. Well, one of the largest agencies, but we have the lowest paid uh deputies. So we need to be more competitive in the marketplace. The sheriff's department has a lot of retirees, so we need to make sure that we can be competitive. And we have people that can actually protect and serve our county. Also, roads and bridges are a disaster. So before we uh start making cuts, we need to evaluate how we can improve our basic government services. You know, if we start cutting the budget, we're going to have to cut services along with it. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. And Ken, what's your position?
Yeah, the the government is no better than us. It should live with its means just like we do. Um, and a big issue of taxes that I've found is knocking on doors. A lot of people who live in Kansas City and Clay County, those two jurisdictions at the same time, they pay a lot of taxes downtown Kansas City. And yet we don't get a lot of fair share of services in return. Kansas City doesn't come up and uh and fix our potholes. They don't come up here and plow our streets. They don't send their police officers up here. Uh, I would fight to ensure our tax dollars stay in the Northland. Uh, I'm a business owner. Uh, my personal finances finances are in shape. My business, my business's finances are are in shape. As county commissioner, I would ensure to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money because it's their money and their government.
Thank you. Next question. Should county commissioners write and adopt specific policies? Or should the details of these policies be crafted and implemented by boards, commissions or outside specialists? And this time we'll start with Steve.
I think it should be both. Uh, I think a lot of us have experience from working with other governmental bodies and that will help us in reviewing and examining the policies we need. Um, I think what we're going to have is Jerry Knowlty has already mentioned, there's going to be a lot of conversations about how this new county commission should look, whether or not we should have various committees uh with expertise in certain areas to look at those things. Uh, I think as an attorney, I have an advantage. I certainly have helped a lot of cities and other governmental bodies uh adopt policies and review policies also for uh many uh companies. Uh, so I think it would be a combination of both of those. I think we need to look very closely at some of our nepotism policies that are in the new charter. I think we need to look at some of our policies of how we examine the people that we are going to appoint and hire to various positions. I think we need to examine and follow the charter as to more diversity in the various citizens committees that we have within the county. And when we go through all that together, I think we can make the county much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne?
Uh, yeah, I uh, I feel that uh the people put us in the position uh to administer their county. So I think the primary responsibility would belong with the commission. But for once I agree with Steve, I think that uh it is a good thing to look at our different boards that we have. And we work with those people. We work with the other office holders. If a policy is going to be changed, you kind of have to investigate the whole thing. Make sure you're not making the snap decision in the commission room before you investigate uh all avenues and then make a conscious decision.
Thank you. Sherri?
Well, I have to agree with uh Stephen, Joanne. I think it's a combination of both. But I also believe that when the commission appoints, the Clay County commissioners appoint members to these boards, that ultimately the Clay County commissioners are responsible for what those board members do. Give them a little leeway in what they're going to establish as policies. But then we need to oversee, the county commissioners need to oversee what policies they're instituting. And they uh, it could be expanded to more boards than just the ones that we have now. And that would alleviate some issues. But overall, I think the boards can establish their own policy, but it has to be up to the county commissioner to appoint responsible citizens to those boards and oversee what they are deciding.
Thank you. Jay?
Yes, thank you. So uh, you know, I spent thirty years in government and and during that time I actually wrote a lot of policy and I approved a lot of policy. And one thing I learned is that you don't ever want to write policy in a silo. Uh, the more information you can get, the more input you can have, the better the policy is going to be. Another thing I learned is you don't have to reinvent the wheel. Most cities, most counties, most boards have faced whatever issue it is that we have faced or we're going to face, they faced it already. So let's use it that other people already have in place. Um, what's worked, what hasn't worked? Um, I I think that's really important to do. And when it comes to uh the whether it's writing the policy, I, as many people involved in that is the better. As far as approving the policy, you know, we have elected officials that are in place to do exactly that. They're the policymakers. Uh, they're the ones that decide if the policy, putting, having an appointed person decide the policy uh who hasn't been elected by the people. It's it's, it depends on who that person is, what the board is and what the policy is. But in general, I think that is the responsibility of the elected is to approve policy. That's it.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, uh, problems that the county uh and the commission uh encounter are problems that affect the people, so the people should have a say so. Uh, as county commissioners, we're not, we're not kings or queens, uh queens. Problem solving for the county should be a democratic process. Uh, I applaud uh Jerry Knowlty under the new uh county constitution. He's a, he's got appointed power subject to the approval of the county commissioners for boards and commissions. And uh both he and his fellow current commissioners have done an outstanding job filling appropriate board members. Um, and I have uh have uh no doubt they'll continue to do so. But it's it's the people's government. It's the people's problem. They should have a say so of how these problems are fixed.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, so I think that the final decision rely, you know, is on the county commission to finalize any documents and approve any ordinance. But you know, I think we appoint boards to help us in that process. I think we should have public meetings and not even just have public meetings at the courthouse. I think we should take, you know, public meetings to the people sometimes. Like when we, when the county commission was talking about building a brand new annex, you know, they claimed that they got public input, Jean and Luanne did, but nobody ever heard any public input that was in favor of it. Jean and Luanne never went to the people directly. They expected people to come at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock in the morning on a Monday. Um, so you know, we need to actually go out to the people, listen to them, get their input, hold public meetings, listen to boards. I mean, we appoint people to the boards for a reason. So I think it's a, it's a mix between the getting info from the people and the boards, but ultimately the final decision rests on the uh commission.
Thank you. Jared?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, Jay hit it, hit uh really the nail on the head. There's a difference between policy and process. We who are elected officials are supposed to set policy and then it is the staff's uh part to implement those policies. One of the parts of our new constitution uh requires me as a uh, as the person who makes those nominations to the commission to consult with the administrator. Uh, whether I was required to or not, it is good practice. Uh, and I do consult with the administrator. Uh, right now I'm in the process of 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 setting up some uh nominations for a number of committees. And I am, uh, what I would generally do is go to the committee itself. I will talk to the members that have been previously appointed. Uh, and I'll get their views on not only a good fit, but someone who is a good ta- a good talent uh fit. Uh, if if they have, uh, you know, if they have a a need for a skill, I want to make sure that they have someone who's going to be able to do uh that very thing. Uh, but this comes back also to the new constitution. Seven uh commissioners, so I have six people that I can now go to and I can get opinions from. And I can make sure that we are making the wise decisions possible, wisest decisions possible. These uh commissions uh and boards are largely advisory. Uh, and we have not taken advantage of the wealth of of knowledge, experience that they bring to the table and we need to to go more in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. If new resources were available, what one area of county services would you feel most needs additional resources? And we'll start with Jay Johnson.
Yeah, so I think I made my position pretty clear just about everywhere I I go. I think when it comes to uh government and the role of government, the number one priority of government is public safety. Without public safety, everything else fails. Uh, public safety is important to businesses. It's important to uh your property values. It's important to your insurance rates. It's important to the schools. It's important to so many things. So public safety is number one. To me, public safety is a lot of facets to public safety, but the biggest ones at the county level that that cost money um are going to be that of the sheriff's department and the and the county prosecutor's office. Right now I think they're underfunded. I don't think uh, I don't think our employees, um, not only are they, are they paid adequately. I think uh there needs to be proper amount of funding for um training that they need uh and so forth. But uh, public safety is always going to be the number one thing for me, although understand public safety reaches a lot more than that. I mean, I I was talking to a library director not too long ago. I said, you know what? You're one of my biggest crime fighters. I said, the reason why is because there's a study that shows kids that don't learn, know how to read by the time they hit the fourth grade, they have a seventy percent chance of being incarcerated and or on welfare by the time they're adult. So if you can teach a child to read by the time in fourth grade, you're a crime fighter. Uh, you're reducing crime issues. Uh, and that's the kind of thing we have to think about, long-term, big picture. Um, what are our fourth grade is going to look like, you know, when they're twenty-year-olds? Uh, and a lot of that goes back to the home and to enter the culture in the home and 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 what do we, what do we think is important? And certainly education is part of that, but public safety.
Thank you. Sherri?
As far as the county goes, right now, I would, if we had resources, it would be the sheriff's department. They are understaffed, they're underfunded. They, the jail needs to be improved. This has been a long-term issue. Um, we can't compete with other jurisdictions on hiring people. We need to attract, we need to train and we need to maintain these people. Uh, and it's kind of a, a little double-edged sword because they uh reduced the levy, the county levy lowered than what the state auditor approved it to be. Uh, so that was resources that we could have used for this, the sheriff's department. And I think there should be uh across the board increases to all employees that work for the county. I worked there for five years. I worked for them for thirteen years and for five of those years, we got no increases at all in raises. So this is an issue that needs to be looked at for all of the employees across the board for Clay County.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, so to echo what everybody else has said so far, for me, uh, public safety, sheriff's department, you know, our sheriff's deputies. I did a ride along with them a few months ago. There was four of them on the uh road at one time to uh, you know, protect the entire county. You know, they help out with all the little municipalities that don't have police forces. Uh, plus, you know, all unincorporated, so you know, they're directly responsible for twenty-three thousand, twenty-five thousand people. But you know, they also oversee oversee and help with mutual aid on all the the entire county. Uh, I'm a Kansas City resident. Our police response times are terrible. You know, most of our police officers, we have maybe seven for an entire day for both Clay and Platt. So uh during our ride along, uh, the sheriff deputy had to do a mutual aid call for Kansas City. Um, so yeah, we need to make sure that our deputies have the resources and that they need to keep all of us safe. And we need to make sure that our jail facility, whether it's upgraded or we build a new facility, we need to start looking at that also. Um, but yeah, public safety be the top one for us.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, safe neighborhood supporting uh the sheriff's department. Um, I'll always fight for more, uh, police officers on the streets, better resources for our sheriff's department. Um, as a United States Marine, I can empathize with the selfless sacrifice. Um, the men and women serving in our sheriff's department, uh, endure on a daily basis. Uh, and their families, the families, we can't forget that their spouses and kids also sharing that sacrifice. Uh, as a, as a, as an attorney, I'm almost at the courthouse daily. At the front door of the courthouse and then in every courtroom of the courthouse, there's a bailiff, there's a sheriff. So almost on a daily, weekly basis, I'm interacting and communicating with police officers and hearing about their concerns. And pay is a major issue. Resources is a major issue. Uh, we pay a lot of money, we taxpayers pay a lot of money to train these sheriffs. And because we don't pay them enough, they move to a different jurisdiction to pay some more like KCPD. So we're effectively training to pay KCPD's, uh, officers down the road. And, um, Mr. Basco is down in North Kansas City, uh, lost his life. His fiance lost a future husband, their family lost a good man. And he was getting paid around twenty dollars per hour. That's a gosh darn shame.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yes, uh, to me, this is not a hypothetical. This is reality. Uh, we got a, a substantial amount of ARPA money. And I won't tell you what I would do. I'll tell you what we did do. Uh, our team worked together to get community needs taken into account. Top of the list was the sheriff's department. We did, we were doing, we did facilities upgrades that they absolutely needed. Um, we also use that money to begin implementation of Sheriff Aiken's, uh, pay plan. Uh, I've been talking to him about this for a couple of years now. And this is money that we used to, to begin implementing a three-year plan that, that, that will, well, the sheriff, uh, proposed. And I think it is, I, I think we need to be able to do that, uh, to the, to the, the highest degree possible. Uh, we are putting together a co-location. We put money in on the co-location effort in Gladstone. To bring our, our dispatchers together and make more efficient use of those, uh, of those resources. Um, we put money into city projects, water projects, uh, that they needed, uh, to, to make their cities run better. Uh, and obviously because this was, uh, money that was meant for health, we, we put money into different health, uh, departments. Uh, our health department into the hospitals. And we put, uh, something approaching a hundred thousand vaccines in arms. Through a, a partnership with ourselves, the hospitals and Cerner Corporation. That's the kind of a thing and we are in, and we are still working on that today. So thank you.
Thank you. Joanne?
Yeah, I, um, I would put the sheriff's department right at the top for myself. My husband was a Kansas City Missouri Police Department, uh, employee for twenty-five years, over twenty-five years. So I know what it's like to be a officer's wife. Jay's quite right. You're right there with him. Um, I think that our, our men, we've trained, they get good training as best as they can. We need to improve the training. We need to improve the equipment. So they're protected as well as being, have the ability to protect our citizens. Um, and it is a shame that they're paid as little as they are for the job that they do. So I, I would say the sheriff's department, I would solidly support them one hundred thousand percent.
Thank you. Steve?
To me, public safety is more than just the police department. Uh, it's the facilities of the jail, it's the vehicles, uh, it's also our roads in the county. Those all play a part in public safety. And as we all know, as private business people, when you lose an employee, it's going to cost to retrain the new employee. It's also going to, many times you end up paying more for the less experienced person in order to get them into your system. So I think in addition to increasing the pay for the sheriff's department. We really need to be looking at increase in pay at the same time for all our county employees. So that those people that diligently work for us and provide good services, we're guaranteed to be able to keep on the long term. So I think we need to look at all those. How can we better spend the money if we would get that money? Uh, and there's a lot of factors that we should consider in that on how best to use it for the, for the greatest benefit of all the people of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is this. This November, voters across the state will be asked to consider amendment three. Which would allow the use of recreational marijuana in addition to other proposals. If amendment three passes, how will it affect policing and other aspects of government in Clay County? And we're going to go back to our East at Large candidates and start with. Steve? Who just disappeared? Steve, are you there? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, you ready for me? Yeah, okay. Um, it's going to be a real challenge to the county sheriff's department. We were back to public safety again. Uh, looking at the experiences in, uh, Colorado, you have the issue of impaired driving. Uh, but you can't use a breathalyzer. You've got to, so, uh, when I've been out to Colorado here recently. I hear a lot about all the training and effort that's being put in to the fact of, uh, uh, training officers. To recognize in fact what needs to be done, how to recognize that problems. I think it's also going to cause a lot more problems for, uh, theft. I think it'll, there's going to be a lot more problems with, uh, crimes. Uh, there's going to be a higher incident of increased drug use because, uh, again, it's not, uh, your grandfather's or your mother's marijuana anymore. It's much stronger. They're going to use that for a while and then they're going to move on to other things. I'm very opposed on this proposition. Uh, I don't even like the idea of the medical marijuana because we're telling, telling our youth. It's going to be okay to use marijuana and their brain is not developed until it leaves age twenty-five. I think we're going to see a lot more addiction. Uh, Tri-County Mental Health that I represent is going to have a lot more problems than other, and hospitals too. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne?
Yes, I, I think that there's a lot of problems with this bill. First and foremost, who's going to administer it? We, we don't know who the administrators will be. It's not our legislators. So that, that to me is a big problem. Uh, the second problem is the police department, uh, the sheriff's department. Uh, I talked to the sheriff as a matter of fact today. We were talking about the very fact of how do you test these people? He said, there is a way you can test it. We have two testers in the entire county. And they have the ability to do whatever, you know, the blood and then they take that in, they test it. But when they go to court, they get a lawyer and the lawyer goes to the judge. And there's a lot of judges that don't like this, uh, testing at all. So they end up kicking them free. So that's a, a big problem. Um, the sheriff did also share with me that there are devices that are being tested today. That will give us the ability to do a test like a blow test, like you do for alcohol. But those are years away, you know, maybe two years or more. So there is no way to do that. We do not know also for this bill, they say programs will be getting money. We don't know what those programs are. Look at the, what we've experienced with the riverboat. You see people down there, if you go to the riverboat to eat or gamble, whatever, it's packed with people. So there's a lot of money coming in, you know that. Where's it going? Do the schools getting it? They seem to always be needing money. So I think that this is all just a little too, has too many unknowns. So I would say at this point in time, it, it would be a major mistake to put this thing into action.
Thank you. Jerry?
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm opposed to it. I think you need, look, no further than Colorado to see the variety of problems that it causes. Um, but it has additional issues beyond that. Being an amendment, that means that there is no chance short of an additional amendment to correct any flaws that may well have been involved in that. There are far more questions than answers. Uh, does it create new bureaucracies? Who, who is the person who oversees those bureaucracies or is it a department? Is it the legislature? It seems to be none of the above. What's going to become of this money? Um, it is, I think, probably, it, my, my thought is this is poorly written and not very well thought through. And, uh, like I say, if you go to Colorado, what you're going to see is not what we want to have in Clay County. That is people living on the streets and the smell of marijuana throughout the entire community. That's, uh, I think that's a bad choice for Missouri and I think it's a bad choice for Clay County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, how would you respond?
Yeah, I oppose it. Uh, I support medical marijuana. Uh, I have a lot of veteran friends that go tend, down to the VA with their diagnoses and symptoms. And the doctor gives them a bag of pills and it only, uh, perpetuates and, and worsens the problem for the veteran. And the veteran will go get medical marijuana and it doesn't get rid of the diagnosis, but it eases the symptoms for the veteran. Uh, recreational marijuana, uh, totally opposed. Uh, as a criminal defense attorney, I defend a lot of individuals who have been charged with crimes related to illegal, uh, drug use. And I know with speaking with them and their background, uh, marijuana was a gateway drug. And, uh, making marijuana more widely available with potentially no repercussions and no consequences for these people. Uh, that's a bad recipe. I mean, I, I'm engaged to a beautiful lady and she's got a, uh, a very energetic three-year-old, my future stepson. Uh, we're out in the community quite a bit and we go to playgrounds quite a bit. Uh, the last thing we want to see is, uh, some young man high on weed, uh, uh, at the play, uh, playground. And, um, I, at two thirty-six today, I got a potential client in my law practice saying he was charged with DUI. Uh, driving under influence of marijuana. And the other candidates are right, testing, uh, is, is not where it should be. Uh, so if I take on the clients, um, he's not probably going to get a lot of consequence.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah. So full disclosure, I do have a medical marijuana card. Um, take it for anxiety. I hate taking all the Xanax that the doctor prescribed. So I take that to help me sleep at night. Just, just full disclosure, I'll put that out there. Um, you know, I'm all for medical marijuana. Uh, I think that it does have a lot of benefits to it. It's, um, you know, better than taking opioids and other pills all the time, like Mr. Jameson mentioned at the VA. But, um, yeah, I have a lot of concerns about recreational marijuana also. Um, you know, how are we going to enforce it? How are we going to, uh, test for it, stuff like that? So I do have concerns about this bill also. I think there's a lot of questions. I think that it was poorly written. Think, um, you know, we need to go back to the drawing board and write a better bill. But, uh, you know, I am all in favor of medical marijuana. Um, you know, I have a friend who had, uh, Bell's palsy on her left side of her face. She went to the doctor once a week for a month. The doctor just kept shoving pills down her throat. Nothing helped. She, uh, she started taking some edibles, the medical marijuana and acupuncture, and it cleared up. When she smiles, you can't even see that she ever had Bell's palsy. So. Thing medical, I think there's, I think it's good for the medical, but as of right now, I, uh, I just can't support this bill.
Thank you. Sherry?
Well, I was a little bit on the fence about this amendment, but I was at a forum last night for the, my fellow candidates. And after hearing some, uh, comments that were made there, I did a little bit more research. And I found out that this bill does have a lot of, uh, negativity to it. It's a very ambiguous bill. There's no definition as to how it's going to be regulated. I, I really believe that, um. Honestly, I hope it doesn't pass because I think it's going to wreak havoc on our, uh, legal jurisdictions. We need to, uh, have something that's written a little bit better. I don't know why it was, uh, written this way. So I would, uh, I don't want to see it passed. And I'm not a fan of recreational mari- marijuana per se. But, uh, it's still going to be out there and people are going to do it. But we also have a problem with fentanyl. And now is it going to be incorporated in with the marijuana? This drug use is becoming an issue all across the nation. And it's becoming an issue here in Clay County and it needs to be, uh, handled somehow. But this, this, uh, amendment three doesn't tell us how we're going to do it. So I, I'm, I'm going to be a no vote on it. I won't support it and I hope it doesn't pass.
Thank you. Jay?
So at the, at the risk of sounding a little bit like a know-it-all, I actually happen to have some expertise in this. I was a nationally certified and court recognized expert, uh, drug recognition expert. This is my area of expertise. Matter of fact, Joanne talks about those testers. I was the lead instructor who taught the first class of testers back in the early nineties. For the state of Missouri and the state of Kansas. Um, people don't understand, uh, marijuana and the effects today. It's, it's, it's much more different. It's much different than your, your mom and dad's marijuana. Back then, the, the THC, the tetrahydrocannabinol, which is what causes the high, the concentration was maybe four to ten percent. Nowadays it's upwards to almost eighty percent. And some things that happen when you, uh, when you bring that into your system. First of all, a lot of people don't realize when, when delta nine tetrahydrocannabinol is metabolizing the system. It converts to, uh, carboxy THC and hydroxy THC. One causes the high and one causes impairment. The one that causes, uh, the high has a half-life that is much shorter than the one that causes impairment. So what that means is when the high is over and you don't think you're, you're high anymore, you're still impaired. People don't realize that. And you're still impaired with an eighty percent THC level that we're seeing now. That's a big problem for law enforcement. That's a big problem for, for, uh, drug driving and, and impaired drivers. Um, not to mad, you know, someone mentioned, I think it was Jerry or someone that mentioned that the effects that I had, or I think it was, uh, Steve, the effects that it has on, on brains, particularly teenage brains. It is incredible how bad it is and it can't be fixed. So I'm a no.
Thank you. Next question also has to do with the November ballot. Uh, voters will be asked to approve an exception to the Hancock Amendment in order to require the Kansas City Council. To spend twenty-five percent of its budget on the police department. What is your position on amendment four and how would it affect your neighbors to the south? And this time we'll start with Jason.
Yeah. Hey, so, um, you know, I support it. Uh, my brother-in-law is a KC PD officer with Metro Patrol. You should hear some of the stories he tells us. Um, so yeah, no, I support it. I think that it's good that KC PD officers will be taken care of. They'll get the equipment and the resources that they need. Um, you know, I have a Kansas City residence and, uh, our police response time is terrible. I'm hoping that this will allow them to get more police on the street. So that way we can free up the, uh, Clay County sheriffs from having to do mutual aid calls up, that, down here. And, uh, when you say how will it impact the neighbors to the south, are you talking Jackson County?
Yes.
Well, honestly, I hope it helps out Clay County a lot more than Jackson County. We don't have the police officers up here that they have down there, the number. So I'm hoping that we can actually get adequate police coverage for KC PD here in Clay County. And even Platt County. I mean, we have seven officers to cover the entire Northland. We have to call down south to get, to get help. So hopefully we can get some more police officers up north with the passage of this.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, I don't like the means. I don't like the, uh, polarization. I don't like the, uh, politics regarding control of the police board and so forth. I don't like the machinations of how this came about, but I support the instinct. I support the outcome, which is more funding for our law enforcement. And safe neighborhoods is a, is a number one priority for me. Uh, as another can, I believe as Chief Jay indicated earlier, and he's, he's exactly right. Uh, safe neighborhoods has a chain reaction domino effect on all aspects of the county, all aspects of our quality of life, all aspects of government. Um, if you don't have safe neighborhoods, people, people, families don't want to move here. If you don't have safe neighborhoods, businesses don't want to invest here. If you don't have safe neighborhoods, your quality of life goes down. You and your fiance, me, my fiance and her great kid, uh, who loves to keep me up at night and wake me up early in the morning, we can't go to the park. Um, so yeah, again, I know there's politics involved. I know there's, uh, machinations and, uh, that's disheartening. But you can't, uh, disagree with the outcome, which is more, more funds for our law enforcement, which may mean, um, safer streets. Ensuring our children and senior citizens are safe, better pay and better equipment for our sheriff's department.
Thank you. Jay, how would you answer that question?
Yeah. So I agree with what Ken said, you know, there's a lot of behind the scenes at this that is, is very unfortunate that it brought us to this point. But bottom line, it got us to this point where we have the opportunity now to get more funded to, to the Kansas City Police Department and I'm one hundred percent in favor of it. I'd encourage everybody else to vote in favor of that and, and I just won't belabor that point anymore. I think most of us are in favor of it and I, I support that. Yes. I'd encourage everybody else to vote in favor of that and, and I just won't belabor that point anymore. I think most of us are in favor of it and I, I support that. Yes.
Thank you. Sherry?
Yes, I also support the amendment and I think it's a good idea. We need much more resources for the Kansas City Police Department. Years ago, I worked for them and it's always been a battle between state and local control. And bottom line is we need to protect our citizens. And unlike Jason, we need to get some more protection north of the river to help Kansas City. Because when they have calls, that they have to go south of the river, then the Clay County Sheriff's Department has to make up the difference. So I think Clay County will benefit from this, even though Kansas City is, is just a part of Clay County. It's the biggest part of Clay County. So I, I, I approve it and I like it and I think we need to do the funding.
Thank you. Joanne?
I don't, I don't like all the background like everybody said that has created what has happened. But of course, I'm all for the police officers getting some assistance here. I, I do feel that, yeah, we want the Northland protected well. But I also, how it will affect our neighbors to the south. I, I hope that maybe we will get more officers for the north. But I hope that will help blanket a little bit more and cut down some of the crime in Jackson County. It, it's almost embarrassing, thinking back to the days of Chief Kelly, when things were run like a police officer's department should be run. And now it seems like the city's running wild. So hopefully with the additional funds, maybe that will bring additional officers in for the north, but hopefully it will help with the south as well.
Thank you. Steve?
I'm the exception on this. We had this issue come up last night. I oppose this. I oppose it is because I've been a municipal attorney from the time I first started practicing law. And the last thing I want is
Oh, oh. Steve, hang on a second because we just lost your sound. Can tech help us out here? Steve, hold on for a second because we can't hear you.
Okay, Steve, try speaking again.
Okay. Again, I oppose it. I think Kansas City, Missouri should make those decisions themselves as how the money. If people think that the city council is not spending the money appropriately, vote them out. Vote the mayor out, get some new people in there. But I think the citizens of Kansas City are the ones to determine what happens with their police department, how the money is spent. Not all of the people in the state of Missouri. So in this case, I like the idea of the police department getting more money. But I don't think the ends justify the means in this case. How would we like it if they tell Clay County, we have to start spending fifty percent on our roads? We'd be opposed to that. I think Kansas City should see it the same way. Bad idea. I don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you. And last is Jerry.
Thank you. I do have something of a unique perspective on this. The commission prior to the one that is sitting now had engaged in what I would refer to as defunding the police. I've seen budgets come across my desk where zero dollars were allocated for bulletproof vests. Zero dollars. Kansas City, Missouri unfortunately seems to have engaged in a defund the police activity. I like local control. That's my preference. But at some point, the reason they don't have it is because of what was happening during the Pendergast era. Defunding the police is a similar, really bad idea. If these trends continue, it's going to put more and more pressure on our local sheriff's department. And we're going to have to come in and take up the slack. The answer is more cops on the street, better training for them and better salaries for them. The, like I say, this will affect the sheriff's department because someone has to enforce the law. It is our responsibility as elected officials to provide a safe environment for our citizens where they can physically walk off the streets at night. I'm not very, I'm not enthused about the methodology, but it is required. We are, we are in a situation now to where it is beyond an emergency. We have murders so frequently, it's hard to even imagine. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next question is, some citizens in the country have doubts about the security of elections. Do you have confidence in the security of elections in Clay County? Is there anything you would suggest to improve them? And we're going to come back to Jerry.
Thank you. I think we've had some problems with elections. I think once, I think what we need to do is look at when there was a problem with an election. And you don't have to go back much further than the past election. Commissioner Carpenter ran in his primary and there was a glitch. There was a problem where he did not receive any votes in a substantial number of precincts. We all know that is statistically, if it's not impossible, it's so, so vast a coincidence, it's not going to happen. What happened in that instance was our election board immediately started working on what was the problem, started coming to the, to the bottom of the situation. As it turned out, Commissioner Carpenter had indeed won his primary election. They found the problems and they fixed them. We need to be ever vigilant on that. We need to be looking at how we can make sure that elections are fair and, and are open. I am not a fan of strictly electronic voting. I think we need to have paper ballots where you can sit down and actually physically count them. And we needed to be, like I said, we need to be open. We need to make sure that we are using technology that has not been compromised. And that's going to require work on everybody's part to, to make sure that we make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Sorry, Steve. And, and start over and we'll start the timer over. Thank you.
I agree, you know, as Jerry said, there was a problem with the last election and it was caught right away. I have a lot of confidence in the Clay County Election Board of Commissioners. I think they do a good job. I think the workers that we have at the polls do a good job. We obviously need more people. It's getting more difficult to find people. When they're getting threats about the fact that there's some kind of breach in the integrity of the elections. I think in the last election, two years ago, the presidential election, with all the challenges and the recounts, we actually found out that it was a much more secure election than probably most have been in the, in the past. Some of us are old enough to remember back in the days when John F. Kennedy was elected. And the big thing there was, how much did Mayor Daley do to hold back the ballots? See how many votes he needed and suddenly he produced the ballots. Well, hopefully we don't have that anymore. I support fair, open elections, more opportunities, not less, to vote prior to the election. And I agree with Jerry. I like the idea of a ballot that I can actually mark and put in a machine versus just pulling the levers on the, on the machines like we had many years ago. So I'm happy with the election process. I'm happy with our Board of Election Commissioners in Clay County. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne?
Yeah, I, I think that our, the election board does a phenomenal job. Standing there at the polls during the primaries, working it, you saw the judges coming through constantly and monitoring everything. The people that you dealt with in the inside were, were professional as they could be. And I did like the fact that you had your ballot, you marked it with your pencil and then you put it in the little machine. I think that is a good thing. I do know that in the past, one time when my husband ran, they were carrying ballots down to the election board in paper boxes. They lost a number of precincts. Nobody ever bothered to look for them back then. But things have improved so vastly now. I think that we're, we should be very proud of the Board of Elections that we have today.
Thank you. Sherry?
I have every confidence in our Board of Elections here in Clay County and in the state of Missouri. I know that none of our election boxes where you put your little ballot into, nothing is connected to wifi. So nothing can be hacked. So that is a comfort to me and I told a lot of people that also. Now I know some people are upset about the voter ID and they have to show an ID now and that has limited some people that feel like they don't older people who don't have driver's license or anymore, but there are avenues that they can access to get that voter ID processed and that they can take it to the, to the ballot box if they want to. They can also do an absentee ballot. So there are very, a lot of avenues that people can vote now. And I, I don't have any qualms about the election board in Clay County. And I think the whole state of Missouri has a great election integrity.
Thank you. Jay?
Yeah, so I'm certainly no expert when it comes to voting machines or the software that you use to run those machines. So I, I don't have a whole lot of comments about that, but I do have confidence in our Board of Election Commissioners and the people here in Clay County. I think they do a wonderful job. But I think there's a, there's a underlying issue that's, that's not being addressed, which I think is the real issue. You know, last, the last election in, in twenty twenty, there was a big uproar about voter fraud. In twenty sixteen, there's a big uproar of voter fraud. I'm guessing maybe this November, if not in a couple of years, there'll be another big uproar about voter fraud. The underlying issue is there's just a lack of trust and confidence in our government and in some of our electeds and the systems that we use. And the transparency just is not there. And I think that is what needs to be addressed. I think once we have politicians and, and people in office that, no matter what side of the alley you're on, if people trust you, they know you're ethical, they know, they know you have integrity, they know you're transparent, there's no secrets on anything. Any of this voting, how it works, there's no secrets. If people have that trust and that confidence, that transparency is there, these issues of, of, of vote manipulation and fraud, I mean, there's, there's always going to be some hiccups here and there, but the widespread issues that we're having now, I think the deeper issue is just a lack of confidence in our public officials and that needs to change. And quite frankly, that's one of the reasons that got me into this race is I want to help change that. I want to help put some integrity back into the, back into our government.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, I, we have an outstanding, known person, Clay County Election Board, led by two outstanding, amazing individuals. And I also commend all the citizen volunteers who work the polls on election day. So I have no qualms with our Clay County Election Board.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, I think we have a great election board also. You know, we have had hiccups in the past, like Commissioner Nolte talked about where John Carpenter's half of his precincts didn't get counted, showed zero votes when he actually won. Also, you know, back about maybe ten, twelve years ago, Bonnie Sue Cooper ran against Larry Larson. They didn't even have the right ballots at the polling place. When Mark Ella Brock ran for state rep in Liberty, two or three of his precincts didn't, ran out of ballots. And so I think the election board has, has really improved things over the last decade. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of our election board. You know, when they, when, when Commissioner Carpenter's votes didn't get counted, they caught it really fast. There were procedures in place to double check all those. And you know, they initiated a recount and they corrected the issue. So and as for voting, I think all options should be on the table. If you want to vote electronically, vote electronically. If you want to vote with a paper ballot, vote with a paper ballot. So, but yeah, I have all the faith in the world in our, our election board, so.
Thank you. And so before we get to our closing statements, I have one last question for you. What question do you wish I'd asked you tonight? And how would you answer it? And we'll start with Joanne.
You know, really, I, I think you covered the gamut. There's, there's nothing I can think of that you didn't ask. I think we were all prepared for the marijuana thing and we were all prepared for that tax deal. And so, yeah, I, I think it was an exceptional, an exceptional meeting. I've enjoyed it thoroughly and you did a great job. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for the compliment. We appreciate that. Steve?
Well, I thought the two questions that I thought of and was trying to prepare to answer, one was, why did you decide to run for commissioner? And the second, what are, what do you believe your life experiences or qualifications are to be a commissioner? I decided to file because my wife encouraged me because I've always been interested in county government. I've represented many of the county officials. I've appeared before the county commission many times, particularly on planning and zoning issues. I was on the Board of Equalization in Clay County for two terms, seeing how the assessor collector worked and how our valuations went up and down and so on in the county. I was on the school board for twelve years, which is of course is volunteer, no money paid at all. But I thought that was important as a benefit to the county. So my background in local government, representing cities and so on, I thought was important. I think I can add some experience and different experiences as an attorney on the how.
Oh, Steve, we've lost your sound again. Steve, hang on a second. Tech, can you help us?
Yeah, Steve, could you just try to mute and unmute again and see if that works?
Okay. I'm sorry, I cut out there and I apologize. My time's about up. I just think I can add a lot to the commission and the more broad range of experiences we have, I think the better this new commission will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, what's the question you'd like to answer?
Yeah, you know, what's our plan to implement countywide broadband? You know, COVID showed us that broadband's no longer a luxury but a necessity. You know, children were having to go to McDonald's, Starbucks to, to get access when they were doing their work, schoolwork. So how are we going to implement countywide broadband? You know, the FCC has allocated over two billion dollars to implement countywide or to implement broadband in rural rural, rural parts of the country. People have, I've talked to many people in rural, unincorporated Clay County and you know, they can barely get dial-up service. They, they are desperate for broadband. You know, we need people on the commission who will champion working with the Mid-America Regional Council, United Fiber, AT&amp;T, Spectrum, all the different ISPs to implement countywide broadband. And you know, as county commissioner, that's something that I would make a priority. Countywide broadband. And when you talk about broadband, you're not talking about just fiber, you're talking about speed. So I think everything should be on the table and we should be working with all the vendors to ensure everybody has access to broadband.
Thank you. Jay, how would you answer that?
So the question I'd like to have heard from you is, is Jay, why do you suppose your opponent dropped out so soon and conceded the race to you this early? But you didn't ask me that one. Just kidding, Sherry. Just teasing. The, you know, we all have some different platforms that we're running on, public safety. You know, support for small business, infrastructure, that kind of things. Maybe a little bit more specifics on what's the plan for that? And I think somebody already mentioned that. You know, just about everybody talks about, yeah, we're all for small business. What does that mean? What are you going to do for small business? You know, my answer to that would be there's, there's two things that really, two things that are really important to small businesses. One, we want to keep more of our profits. Number two, we want less government intrusion and regulations, which also cuts into profits. So what are you going to do about that? And also the, you know, the, the surtax reduction is, is one thing that addresses that. But, but you know, it's easy to say, hey, I'm all for small businesses. I'm all for public safety. I'm all for infrastructure. But what's the plan? How do you address that? How do you, how do you show that you're in favor of small business? How do you show that you're in favor of public safety? Those are the kind of things, maybe the, the more specifics, which take a little bit more time. But those would be nice to hear. But what's, what's really most important is what do the voters want to hear? What are the voters' questions? It doesn't matter what I want to say. It matters what the voters want to hear. And I think that's, I think you guys did a good job of doing that tonight. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Sherry, did you want to concede?
You're so funny. We got a little humor in here tonight. Okay. I wish you would have asked the same question that Steve said. Why are you running for commissioner? I worked for the county for thirteen years. I saw a lot of stuff that was going on. And then I ran for office a couple of times, didn't win. So I retired, took early retirement. And then when I saw the stuff that was going on behind the scenes and started attending commission meetings as a citizen and not as an employee, I really saw things in a different light. And I want the voice of the taxpayers to be heard. And I want the voice of the taxpayers to be heard. And, um, I'd like to see a female voice on the commission also. There's one there now. And there's possibility that there could be another one or even three. So depending on how the election turns out. But I feel like I have honesty, I have integrity, I have experience. I'm concerned about the community. I've lived here for 38 years. And, uh, I just want to see the county grow and I want to see it grow in the right direction. Thank you. And thank you for putting this together. It has been wonderful to hear everybody's responses and it's good to do it on Zoom.
Everybody saving gas going on Zoom. Sherri, you're the last one in this order.
Uh, there are a couple and I'm just going to bullet point them real quick so I can get them squeezed in. Um, yeah, the surtax, uh, we are having, um, a proposition, uh, A, which it would be, uh, to lower the, uh, commercial property tax, the surtax on businesses. Clay County is the third highest in the state. What this would do would be to give a level playing field between Clay County businesses and Jackson County businesses. Right now, we tax even at a higher rate than Jackson County. Uh, so that was, would be on the November 8th ballot. Um, another issue that I think is an important one is the fentanyl crisis. Um, the county will be getting, and it will come during the tenure of the new commission that is about to be seated. Uh, we will be getting, uh, some money in on a, uh, the opioid, opioid settlement, uh, uh, issue. And at that point, I think that I would certainly recommend, and I think that the support will be there, to expend that money to deal with the fentanyl crisis as well as other monies that we, we need to be putting in there to support the efforts that right now there's a joint effort being contemplated between the Sheriff's Department, the Health Department and the Commission. That's an important place to be. Um, and it's, it has a lot to do with our, our health. Uh, by the way, also on that team are the, uh, are the school boards. So, I mean, we've got the makings of a team right now to start dealing with this fentanyl crisis. Uh, last thing is the relationship between the municipalities and the county. We need to have a better relationship up and down the line, state, federal and municipal. I'm scared and, of course, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I want to thank you all very much. Uh, this, I think it was an exceptionally good opportunity for voters to hear their candidates speak. Um, and now we'll begin our two-minute closing statements and we'll continue in our random order. And we're going to start with Ken.
Yeah. Hey, guys. Uh, thanks again for the league and this store, uh, for putting this together. From a fellow candidate for showing up and everybody watching on Zoom, uh, for being actively engaged and being civic minded. Ken Jameson, running for Western District at Large. That means I'm running countywide. Doesn't matter where you can live, uh, doesn't matter where you can, where you live, you can still vote for me. I'm currently an attorney. I own my own law firm. It's up in Liberty, right off the square. Before I, uh, became an attorney, I served four years on active duty in the United States Marine Corps. In the Marine Corps, I had two jobs. First job was a platoon commander, so I was lead about 45, 50 Marines at any given time. Second job was communications. You had Marines at point A and point B. I made sure those Marines could talk to radios, telephones, computers, satellites and whatnot. I obtained the rank of captain. I was honorably discharged and I served one tour in Afghanistan. Uh, before that, I spent a summer during college, the summer before my senior year of college. I was a teacher down in Kenya, teaching elementary school and middle school kids in, in, in Kenya. A summer before that, a summer between my junior year of college, I was working with missionaries down in the Dominican Republic, uh, building homes in a Haitian refugee camp. I'm not the best carpenter, so I don't know if those homes are still standing, uh, but I gave it my best shot. Uh, my most important job right now is, uh, dad dog to my dog Buddy. Uh, I wasn't asked the last question, but I was gonna, I was wondering why you didn't ask me why I didn't lock up my dog because he's been barking and panting and crying in the background because he's not getting any attention. Um, so dog dad to Buddy and most importantly, my important, biggest job right now and, and number one priority is, uh, fiance to my beautiful fiance, Sierra, and future stepdad to her three-year-old Benjamin.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah. Hey, Jason Whittington, candidate for Clay County Western Commissioner at Large, running countywide. Hey, I was born and raised here in, uh, Clay County, born in North Kansas City Hospital, product of the North Kansas City School District. Went to Maplewood Community College and graduated in 2007 from Park University. Have a, uh, bachelor's degree in public administration. Uh, in 2007, I went and got, got on at a Cerner Corporation, been there for 15 years. Now we're Oracle Health. But I'm in data center operations, meaning I support all 427, 25 clients in our data center, all their IT infrastructure from active directory to hardware. Um, the reason I decided to run, I have three kids, 13, 11 and, uh, well, set with seven next month. And, you know, I want to make sure that they grow up and have a better Clay County than we did, you know, um. I've been involved in the community. Uh, I was chief petitioner for the state auditor of Clay County, helped bring light to all the, uh, corruption and go, misdeeds at the courthouse. Um, also I, uh, have fought for safe routes to school. People don't realize that neighborhoods south of Vivian Road and in other older parts of Liberty, Excelsior Springs and Carney, kids don't have sidewalks to walk to school. Been able to get about $5 million worth of sidewalks, uh, for the kiddos here in North Kansas City. And want to help, uh, the county look at starting a municipal infrastructure program to help other older neighborhoods get sidewalks so kids can get to school safely and people can, uh, put, walk through their neighborhood without worrying about getting hit by a vehicle.
Thank you very much. Steve?
I moved to Clay County in 1973, uh, to Clay Como to go to law school. I've lived in Clay County since then, Kansas City, Missouri. And since 1985, my, my wife and my four daughters and our nephew all moved to rural Clay County in the Smithville School District. Uh, I practiced law only in Clay County, beginning in North Kansas City, Gladstone. Uh, and now, uh, my office has been many years in the city of Liberty. I've represented several municipalities in Clay County. I've also been special counsel for North Kansas City on one occasion and Gladstone on two occasions on special issues. Uh, I think my background and experience in local government law, particularly on the, uh, Smithville School Board, gave me a lot of perspectives. We managed to keep balanced budgets. We managed to increase our pay for our teachers, which also permitted those teachers to get their masters and gave more opportunities for our students to have college-age credit or college-level credit before they even got out of high school. At the same time, we were able to supplement those kids that did not want to go to college and help them in the trades and so on to better understand their career paths and so on. I think, uh, having been involved with the budgets for many years at Smithville, particularly when we had hard times when the state was cutting our funds, still being able to come out with reasonable reserves, I think has given me some experience and background a lot of people don't have. Um, when you are setting a budget for a government is much, much different than for a business. You have many regulations and laws and procedures that you have to follow. I don't think a lot of people, uh, really appreciate the intricacies of some of that. I think my knowledge and experience and background, uh, somebody told me the other day, said I would be a good moderating effect on the commission, uh, because I have a pretty moderate view in most ways. I listen, I try to apply and then I try to compromise what's best for the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joanne?
Yes, I'm Joanne Lawson. I'm running for Eastern Commissioner at Large. Um, I've lived in Clay County all of my adult life. Uh, we live out in the rural area of the county. And, uh, we live on acreage. We've had our house broken into numerous times, so that's why I'm so fond of the police. They're always there to help you. Um, I feel that the, the, something that I bring to the county, no, I, you know, I don't have a law degree. No. I haven't served on 105 boards, but what I did do was I worked for 40 years in telecommunications. I was a senior account executive. I was one of the first women that they ever had in the state of Missouri that went out and sold outside the office. So I was very proud of that. Um, I learned long ago, uh, how to get along with people. You had to. Uh, a little bit because of you're a woman, you know, they didn't take you quite as, as, uh, honestly as they did a guy, but at the end of the day, when I beat all those guys on sales, they started realizing I was there and I was there to stay. Uh, I handled four states, multimillion-dollar database. And, uh, I did it all successfully. Got along with everybody. People I used to work with 15 years ago, still call me now and be able to chat, chat, you know, with you and just see how you're getting along. I can really work well with people and the nicest thing about me is I'm retired. And I bring all that experience to, to the job of commissioner. And I, uh, am excited about doing it. I sincerely ask you to vote for me. Uh, I'll do a good job. I'll be there. I'll answer your calls. Uh, I, you won't have to hunt me down. I'll always be available to you. And the last thing I have to say is that sometimes, not all the time, but sometimes the best man for a job is a woman. So I look forward to your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize our attire had a little difficulty there. Jerry, you want to make your closing statement?
Yes, I want to say thank you so much again for the league and for those who are, uh, watching both live and who are tuning in, uh, on YouTube later on. I can't emphasize how important it is to have, uh, an involved and engaged citizenry. We've talked a lot about some of the unfortunate times in the past. The, uh, and I would like to tell you that is because I'm such a great guy. I'd like to tell you because we have a bunch of great people in the county. We do have great people in the county. But these changes that we're talking about implementing and the way forward could not happen without citizen involvement. I think it's easy for, uh, for the, uh, for some people to discount the power of the people when they become engaged and they, they see purpose in what they're doing. Um, with that, I think we need to be looking forward. I don't like looking in the rearview mirror. I look like looking through the windshield. We are going forward in a very positive direction in this county. And I've got to tell you, if, if the people honor me by allowing me to, uh, stay in this position, I look forward greatly to serving with the individuals who are on this, uh, on this panel right now, who are going to, uh, some of them obviously are going to be, uh, my fellow commissioners. And I am, I am very excited about the direction Clay County is going. In some ways, with our new constitution, with our new, uh, with our new commission coming in, we are becoming a new county. We are going forward in a very different direction. Um, I've used the metaphor that Clay County has, in that sense, become a blank slate. We are now privileged to be the people who write on that slate what Clay County means. Uh, I've been in those positions where people, I've told people I was from Clay County and they go, really? We are going to change that and the individuals on this panel, along with those of us who are already serving, are going to make sure that when you say you're from Clay County, you can say it with pride and with your head held high. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sherri, your closing statement?
Well, thanks again for hosting this. You know, I come from a, I think a unique journey here.
Jay, I'm sorry, Sherri, I called on Sherri.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come up in a second.
You thought I conceded. What can I say? Hi, I'm Sherri Duffett and I, I want to express my thanks to you all for putting this together tonight. Um, I have lived in Clay County for 38 years. I grew up in Jackson County in the northeast part of, uh, Jackson County. And, uh, my husband and I decided to move north of the river, Pleasant Valley in 1984 for our daughters to go to a better school district. And, uh, they both graduated with honors from Winnetka High School. They went to, uh, college with academic scholarships. And one is actually an educator in the North Kansas City School District now, so very proud of that. Uh, my husband's a retired UAW Milrite for Local 249. I have a lot of union backing. They have been very supportive of me and, uh, they appreciate and that, let me tell you, that's a rigorous, uh, interview process that they put you through. Um, I worked at the county for 13 years, the clerk's office, the public administrator's office and the assessor's office from which I retired. And, um, like I said, I started going to the commission meetings, saw what was going on, got with, uh, Jerry and, uh, Jason and started the audit committee and really found out what was going on. Moved that forward and was appointed by the seven, uh, judicial circuit court judges to be on the Constitution Commission. Very proud of that, to be selected on that, because this is why I'm here now, is we expanded that commission from three to seven. So we need to move Clay County forward. I'd like to be a part of that. And there, this whole panel is an excellent choice of candidates, but I would like to see a female, another female on that commission to express another point of view. We do get things done and I think I can help. I have honesty, integrity and experience. And I think I would be a great commissioner for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Jay.
Okay. Well, thank you for hosting this. And again, uh, Sherri, I apologize for, for talking over you there. My, my fault. Um, I kind of have a unique journey, uh, getting me to this place. My family actually migrated back here to Clay County in the early 1800s. They're actually part of the inception of this county. Matter of fact, my kids will be generation number eight in this county. However, I was actually born and raised in Long Beach, California. Uh, I worked for Long Beach Police Department for 23-plus years and was recruited down to Newport Beach to be their chief of police. Uh, so about 30 years total. When I retired about, almost seven years ago now, I decided, my wife and I decided we wanted to raise our three kids here in Clay County. So we moved here. Um, I was educated in, in Southern California with a graduate degree in public administration. Um, like I said, I rose to the level of chief of police and also had the experience of being an acting city manager. So having that experience kind of helps me a little bit. I think, um, certainly when it comes to having some support for, for Sheriff, uh, Aiken on the, on the commission, I have some of that experience. I think I, I understand what he's going through as the leader of that organization. And certainly knowing Diana Wright's position as the county administrator, having worked in a very similar position as an acting city manager, I can, I can empathize with, uh, what she's going through and, and, and the, the ball she juggles in the air constantly. Um, so I have some of that experience that I thought could help. I, uh, I was going to run for office actually, uh, last time around, but I saw some good candidates were running. I thought, you know what? I don't need to. Um, and then this opened up with the expansion of the, of the commission. I thought, well, I have some experience. I have some, uh, education and, uh, I have the time, having been retired. So I thought, you know, if the voters want me, you know, I'd be humbled to accept that and, and will do the job. And if they don't want me, I'm happy being retired too, but, uh, um, I think my background and what I bring to the table is, is somewhat unique. And there's not a lot of people that, um, can sit on a county commission that have been, um, in the same position as, as, uh, as the sheriff, someone who's run a police facility or someone who's run the entire county, like I did at the city, which actually had a much bigger budget and much more, many more employees. But notice, I think I have a unique position and qualities I can bring to the table. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of our candidates tonight for your willingness to participate. And I want to also thank our audience, both on Zoom and on Facebook and also our future audiences. If you'd like to look at a recording of tonight's event, it will soon be available on the league website. Please take time to share the insight that you've gained tonight with your family and friends. And be sure to get out to the polls and vote on November 8th. Remember to consult vote411.org to review our, your candidates and ballot proposals. If you need help determining your district, please consult the Board of Elections website. Again, thank you to our candidates for an excellent discussion and good night. Thank you.